All right, folks. Good evening, everyone. Good spirited conversation during the Christmas season. Call the city council meeting for Wednesday, December 14, 2022 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence. Holiday season, a lot of people traveling, families coming and going, hoping for their safe adventures. So take a moment to think about whatever it is you're interested in. Thank you. Alderwoman Lee, if you'd please lead us all on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Mr. Crepp, Deputy City Clerk, please call the roll tonight.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten, present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone. As we begin the meeting of the city council, I welcome everybody in attendance and anybody viewing through any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire that we all share, I believe, to make Davenport a better place for everyone. Especially for the folks in here, a reminder, if you have a cell phone, I'd ask you to please put it on silent or turn it off, simply that it doesn't get in the way of anybody speaking. If you want to address the council on any particular issue, please come to the podium, the microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, ward, or address. And if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. When you address the council, please address the council as a one body and not any individual particular person. We will be respectful of you, and when you talk, you'll have five minutes. Thank you very much. Will an alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for November 22, 2022? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I apologize, thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Any opposed? Very good. City Administrator Spiegel, anything for tonight?
Just a reminder that this is the last meeting of 2022 for the council. We will be back here on Tuesday, January 3, 2023, for our first management update of the year and back for Committee of the Whole on January 4.
Thank you, ma'am, very good. Okay, will an alderman move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for December 7, 2022? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have seven appointments this evening, four to the Design Review Board and three to the Affirmative Action Advisory Commission. And I'll read them all and then ask for a motion to approve. Excuse me. Design Review Board, Carla Anderson is a reappointment. Victoria Tebbit is a reappointment. Cory Martin is a new appointment. And Silas Inkeep is a new appointment. To the Affirmative Action Advisory Commission, Vera Kelly is a reappointment. Malavika Skarandi is a reappointment. And Tyler Sherwin Cole is a new appointment and a reappointment because she's filling a vacancy. The new appointment would take effect basically for two months, so we're just gonna vote to continue that on. I'll accept a motion. Motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have one presentation this evening, thank you for coming. The Assumption High School Girls Volleyball, 2022 Class 3A State Champions. A little information about this respective group of young ladies that are great representatives of the city of Davenport. Of course, again, Class 3A State Champs defeated Osage, High School 3-1 in the quarterfinals, Mount Vernon 3-0 in the semifinals, and Sue Center, I'm sorry, yeah, Sue Center, 3-0 in the championship match. So my math is good and I went to assumption, so we'll see. 9-1, that's pretty good. Player highlights include Senior Miss Hubert broke all-time school records in kills and aces. Senior Harris Shepherd broke a season, a single-season record for blocks. Freshman Dara broke a single-season record for hitting efficiency. And sophomore, Miss Hubert, broke a single-season record for assists. So quite the accomplishments for this young group of young ladies, and I'll be happy to meet the coach, the coaches, at the podium. And then we'll call the respective ladies up for the ones that are here especially, but we'll recognize all of the participants on the team individually, and then we'll take a big group picture. So, coaches, please. Wanna come up? And then to me, I'll shake their hand, we'll take a quick picture and then we'll move. And ladies, as the ones that are here, you come up when you do the individual thing, then just move back here and stand and we'll take a group picture, so. So Auntie Catula is not available. Drew Dorsey is here. Congratulations. Stand here and she's gonna take a picture of us. Yep. Yeah, sure. We're gonna move back there. Very good, thank you, and clap. Ellie Harley is not available. Ellie Hubert is available. Here you go. Sir, thank you. That'll be our challenge. Ma'am, congratulations. Maddie Dawson is here. Congratulations. Lily Van Severn is here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Maddie Dobbles. Congratulations. Isabella Kogman. Congratulations. Amy Hubert is not available. Ella Dare. Congratulations. The rest of the applicants are not available, Lea Morrow, Ella Diilio, Ava Harris Shepherd, Elizabeth Snyder, Nora Remery, Heather Jondal, Emma Strajak, Catherine Snyder, and myself is here. Jim Finn. Kyle Condon. Our other assistant coach, Jill Beinborn, who cannot be here today. A big round of applause for them. So ask the city council to stand up and move to the center. And ladies, if you could shift this way a tad. There you go. And then listen to this wonderful person to make sure we get to where we are so everybody can see us. And tell us to move.
Nope, we should be good. You wanna take this step and one step there, there you go. All right, ready, one, two, three. Or do a couple.
And then we'll get time for parents for a second?
Yep, one, two, three. And then one more on the phone, or on the camera. One, two, three. Okay, then stay there for parents.
Okay, parents, you have ten seconds.
You also get an email with these ones, too. Oh, so, yes. Thank you.
Okay, great job. Or maybe a captain or a student, anyone? Anyone wanna say anything? Somebody. Uh, we just appreciate the advice.
I think they're speaking for all of us when we say that we appreciate the opportunity to recognize and we're a great group, and I think they represent a lot of qualities about, not just their school, but the city of Davenport and the Quad Cities. And we're very lucky, coaches, to be able to coach a great group that got along and worked hard. So it made our life super easy, and this is really cool for them to be recognized in a form like this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Ladies, thanks for being great ambassadors to the city of Davenport.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we will pause a second. If the team and coaches and parents want to depart, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. When I usually say that, I get smiles and then quick departures. But we'll pause just a second to let you make that decision. Okay, next is petitions communications. I just wanna say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and any other particular holiday that people recognize during this time. I'd ask everybody, you know, be safe, enjoy the seasons, and thank you for your participation. So I see Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will be having a fourth ward meeting this Monday, the 19th, at the Keppi Building located in the Mississippi Fairgrounds. We'll be going, talking about Lombard and Jebon Street. Had some concerns and some problems from neighbors about the speed that people travel in that area. So see if we can't get that taken care of and talked about and, you know, see to make sure that that area or that intersection stays safe. So please come, we'll talk about other fourth ward issues. Six o'clock, Monday, the 19th, Keppi Building. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about the level of talent we have in the city with our high school folks. I recently attended a very impressive musical event that was held at the Adler for all three high schools, public high schools in the area, for both musicians with instruments and singers. And it was just a wonderful opportunity to see the talent that we have in our public high schools here for music and the type of music programs that we have. So I just wanted to pass that on, it was an excellent show. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Aldrin McGinnis.
Absolutely, Alderwoman, please.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that there is no third ward meeting in December. Would ordinarily be on the 19th, but we will be back on the same day and time on Monday, January 16, at the city council chambers at 6:30. So I hope to see you then, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, we'll move to individual approval of items on our discussion agenda, and we have a couple. The first one is a second consideration for an ordinance of case ORD 22-01, being the quest, being the request of RY Holdings LLC to amend table 17.08-1, use matrix of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa to allow dwelling, single-family, as a permitted use in the RMF multi-family residential zoning district. Is there any public with comment? Seeing and hearing none, will an alderman move second consideration? It's an, uh, motion and a second, any discussion from all their folks? Seeing none, Brian, please call roll on second consideration.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
And Jobin?
Yes.
Ten, yes, Your Honor.
Very good, the ordinance moves to third consideration. The next item is a first consideration of an ordinance for case REZ 22-07, being the request of high properties on behalf of Shamrock Properties to rezone approximately 104.57 acres of land bounded by Veterans Memorial Parkway, Eastern Avenue, Interstate 80, and Jersey Ridge Road from S-AG Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Residential District, 33 acres. R4 Single Family and Two Family Residential District, 20 acres. RMF Multi Family Residential District, 35 acres. And C2 Corridor Commercial District, 16 acres. Is there any public with comment? Seeing none, will an alderman move first consideration? Motion and a second, any discussion from my older colleagues? Seeing none, Brian, please call the roll for first consideration.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Cornet?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Ten, yes, Your Honor.
Very good, the ordinance moves to second consideration. Number three, the next item is a motion approving the appeal to overturn the Design Review Board decision to deny case DR 22-21 exterior painting at 626 West River Drive. A yes vote overturns the Design Review Board decision. A no vote upheld, upholds the Design Review Board. Is there any public with, um, comment? Please come to the podium, ask for your ward, name, or address. If you're not here, love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Counsel, Mayor, how's it going? Bill Sheeter, um, Davenport, Iowa. As per the last meeting and about the appeal, there was, I think I sent, I don't know if you guys received it, but there was a lot of discussion about some of the red flags for the whole appeal process. I am confident in doing this appeal that I have kind of addressed all those issues, you know, about the whole process. But before getting into that, the reason why we're here is, in what it might have seemed like with the, you know, kind of the back and forth emails, kind of black and white, as it was a mistake on my part. The application process didn't, wasn't done correctly, but it wasn't done intentionally. I was just under a different understanding of what I needed to apply for. And my design that I did for Cookies and Dreams didn't include that, but I'm not the one who turned in that design, so I didn't realize that there was a actual something that said we weren't painting. So this was just a quick fly-by-night, like because of weather and timing, that we went to paint it with me understanding with brief communication that it was okay. And after finding that out, you know, that's kind of why we're here. And we submitted to the DRB immediately after that, and I've had a lot of dialogue with a few people who I work really well with in the city to do that application. But once again, at the DRB meeting, I wasn't in attendance. I had to rush home to be with the young kid, and I thought my architect was gonna be there as well, but he did not. So, long story short, the pictures and the whole process is what you guys see here was a few bits of really important information that I didn't get to share with the DRB. And appealing against the ruling for the DRB, especially with all the things that I have going on downtown, is not exactly how I wanted to go about it. I would have preferred to actually work with the DRB on this, just with the information you guys have, and pretty confidently would have got the result. Otherwise, I wouldn't even appeal. So my suggestion and request to the council is that instead of voting on this, maybe it would be a possibility to send this back to the DRB and allow me to present this to them, which I didn't get to do the first time. That way, we don't have to, you know, it should have gone through the DRB, that's what they do. And I respect them, obviously, as I do all the members of the city. So maybe that's a better course of action? That's my question.
We're listening, and then the council will have time to dialogue here.
Gotcha. I get, yeah, so, long story short, I think a kind of a vote against the ruling would just be a little bit abrupt and probably not the right course of action, especially for the mistakes that I made, which I apologize for. It honestly was just a mistake in understanding. I haven't been doing this whole development thing for a long time, so. If that's a possibility, that's my request to the council. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else. Will an alderman move the motion? Motion and a second, any discussion? I see Alderman Gripp.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. So as I discussed last week, I did set up a meeting with Mr. Sheeter down at the Cookies and Dream headquarters on River Drive. And I have to say, he took me through the inside. It's a very cool production facility, a great addition to the downtown. We did walk the, walk around the perimeter of the building, and a couple of things I noticed is that about a third of the building is painted. Unfortunately, the portion of it that is painted is the older brick that's not supposed to be painted, and there's a lot of the newer brick that is still currently in its original condition. So that's unfortunate. I think it would be an easier decision if the newer brick was what was painted, but that's not the case. Also, he has begun going through and fixing some of the structural issues with the brick, so re-tucking and fixing, replacing some bricks and things of that nature, which was in the application to the DRB. But for me, as I evaluated this, here's the line of reasoning that I was going on. So did Mr. Sheeter know that he should have painted, or he wasn't allowed to paint his building because it was in the downtown area that was under the purview of the DRB? I can't know that for certain, right? I couldn't, in researching it, I couldn't, I couldn't know that for certain. So my second question is, should he have known? And I think he should have known. And the reason I think he should have known is because he owns property in Two Schmidts. So he owns property in the East Village Schmid, he owns property in the Downtown Schmid. He's gone through the process of repainting a building in the downtown and had to go through the DRB. So in my opinion, probably should have known. And then, then the question is, does it matter? Right, does it matter? And I think it does. And I think it's important to talk about what the DRB is and why we have it. We don't have the Design Review Board over the entire city. We don't do this in every place in the city. We do this in the East Village because it's different and important. And we do this in the downtown because it's different and important. We do it on Elmore. Am I missing any? Are those the only three? Those are the three. So those are the only three places that we do it, right? So I do think it's important, and it's really to say, hey, this is an old historic downtown with old historic buildings, and we need to maintain the integrity of these buildings. And I think there's something to say about that. So I do think DRB is there for a reason. All of the downtown business owners understand that they have different design guidelines. They're part of a schmid, they get it. So having known, having said all of that, I think we have three courses of action as a council tonight that we have to consider. If I've missed any, I'm open to what other courses of action we have. We could just go ahead and straight vote, right? If we vote yes, then he gets to paint the building. If we vote no, then he would have to remove the paint that he has on one-third of the building, and he would not be able to submit a similar proposal for a calendar year. So he'd have to wait 12 months before he submitted a similar proposal. He could do a different proposal without paint, but he couldn't submit a similar proposal. So that's one. We can just vote it out tonight and go with what the council decides. We could send it back to DRB to have them reevaluate it. As Mr. Sheeter said, he was not able to attend the meeting, so he wasn't, wasn't able to plead his case like he was tonight. But I don't think the DRB is likely to overturn the decision, and they're not really set up to negotiate. They're really set up to take in the information and make a decision based on the facts. So I don't know if that's the right course of action. And then I think the third course of action would be to table it, to not vote tonight, and say, hey, we're gonna give you 30 days to go work with our professional staff and see if you can come up with something that would meet the requirements of the city, and then bring it back to the council in January, and we'll vote on it. And it's either good or it's bad at that point, we have to vote. So I just kind of wanted to frame the conversation and hear what you all have to say, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, I see.
Mayor, at some point, I'd like to talk, but when you, when I'm in line. This is Aldrin McGinnis.
Alderwoman McGinnis, please.
Well, if there's someone in front of me, I'm fine, but if someone else talks. Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I did have a number, a couple of questions and some comments tonight as well, following up from last week. You know, we certainly always appreciate investment in our downtown by everyone or any part of our city. And we certainly, you know, try to, I know our staff tries to work, and we try to work with everyone and across the city, and I think they do a pretty good job. I am, I did, you know, receive an email today, as others did, and I am, it called into my mind some questions. I'd like, I will like to respond to Alderman Gripp's comments as well. But I, I'd like to ask Planner Berkeley, if she could come forward, please? Like to ask her a couple of questions.
She's coming up.
Thank you.
Laura Berkeley, Development Neighborhood Services.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. On the question of the, you know, we've talked a lot about the brick, and, you know, I have in front of me your, the staff's denial of painting, talking about the brick being older, more delicate brick. I think you laid out a very good plan of concerns of why this should not, that this should not happen. And one of the things is you talked about the complementary nature of the building to the surrounding, however rough or tough the building is. It is an industrial area, it kind of has been, and you kind of see that all around this block, and that's pretty unique in this area. But I wanted to ask specifically, because Mr. Sheeter in his email had talked about replacing some brick. Is this something that would require, have you, has that been followed up with design review or with staff at all?
So as part of the original application from June of 2021, tuck pointing was listed on the application. So Design Review Board did vote approval of tuck pointing on the condition that staff review the replacement brick to make sure it matches color and dimensions of the existing brick.
Have you had that opportunity?
I have not.
So you're, so we're hearing tonight that brick has been put on the building, and you were to approve it before it was put on the building? Is that what I'm hearing?
That was Design Review Board's condition that we review the, any replacement brick.
Okay, so again, no follow-up there in terms of your approval. Have there been any other issues with this building in terms of approval, approvals process?
There was one other one. It has been corrected, but one of the original pieces of the request and one of the main ones was replacement of the staircase off of West River Drive. It was originally a shorter cement stair with a wooden stair built over it. What was submitted to Design Review Board was full cement stairs with aluminum black railing. And then what was constructed was a new wooden stairset over the original cement stairs. Now, Mr. Sheeter was notified of that issue, and he did correct it. So that has been resolved.
Okay, so the plan that was approved by Design Review wasn't done and now has been replaced?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think that's all I have right now for you. I did want to respond to Alderman Gripp's three points. He's correct, we can vote yes, we can vote no. My concern is with the third is that I'm not sure, we have a process here. We have a design review process that everybody who has a building downtown follows. This gentleman has had to go through this process a number of times. So not understanding is a little bit problematic for me because... So not understanding is a little bit problematic for me because he's had to do this before. So sending it back, I question that because, you know, our role here as the council is either to vote yes or no to what's before us. It's not to send it back to Design Review. It's not to send it back to staff to work with him, I don't believe, because Design Review has made its decision. Design Review Board has made its decision. So I am concerned about that. And I'm concerned about that because there are certainly other instances in recent times where people, for instance, have been told they can't paint certain things, and they've accepted that. So my question is, if we table this and then say, we'll go back and work with staff, what are we saying to our commission, who we've asked, you know, they volunteered to do this work, they work pretty diligently, staff works diligently? What are we saying? I know there's times when we have, you know, gone back and been able to make changes, but I really question this in the context of a building where there's been several issues that, whether it's the replacement brick not going before staff, the stairs, various things that just seem to keep happening with this building. In light of all of that, why we would table it and say, go back and work with staff? I am concerned about that. And so that's just kind of my thoughts tonight. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Listening to, you know, my colleague Alderman Grip and Alderwoman McGinnis, I was kind of leaning towards, like I said, Ms. Chair, I appreciate your, you know, investing in Davenport, being downtown. As a new Alderman, you know, these other factors that Aldermen that have been on the council before, East Village and all that, like I said, I didn't know about. So, for the benefit of your doubt, I'm going to act like, you know, they did happen, but I won't hold that against you. What I'm hoping for is, since you have made an investment, we do appoint people to our boards, you know, we should respect them. But I also feel like the first set of information that we got the first week, and then what you submitted, if it's all, you know, the amount of newer brick compared to older brick, what was talked about, will DRB overturn that? Like Alderwoman McGinnis said, to make you work with staff, make our staff do that, and then us come back and vote, I think would be sending the wrong message. And I was kind of leaning towards that, but I agree with her. So my hope is that my colleagues will give you a chance to go back to the Review Board, present your facts as they are, explain to them, maybe with the new information that we have here, maybe they'll have a different decision, and we'll let that, you know, fall where it may. So I wish you the best. I hope going forward that please check all your boxes, cross all your Ts, dot all your Is. You know that you will be made sure of that, so please do that. And I hope my colleagues, you know, as a person, as a small business owner myself, who has made mistakes, isn't perfect, but wants to see the continued growth in Davenport and wants more business owners to come to Davenport, because we will work with you. You have to follow our rules and guidelines, but we will work with you. So I hope my colleagues will give them a chance. If the new information that is presented to us doesn't change their view, they vote it down, that's what he should live with, and that's what we should go with, and then I think everybody will be happy. So I hope my colleagues will send it back to DRB. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I represent Eighth Ward. Eighth Ward has no Schmidts. I'm probably about as far away from this area in terms of the geographic area I represent as I could be. But I do spend a lot of time down on the riverfront, and I spend a lot of time crossing Centennial Bridge both directions. I've always thought that that building was pretty decrepit and ugly. And it was a shame to have it look like that as all the people come across Centennial Bridge. I always kind of hoped it could get fixed up. So I understand about the DRB. This sounds like just an overall unfortunate situation, and I would like to see this building look more presentable. Because it is an entranceway into Davenport from Centennial Bridge. I think we've got the opportunity to make it more presentable. Do I know how that should be? I'm not saying it's paint or not paint or whatever. I just think that if we have an opportunity and somebody that's willing to put the money and time into it, I don't know if we should return it to DRB. Again, I don't have any Schmidts. I don't have any experience of what the processes are for those. But if we could, like Alderman Grip said, perhaps send it back to work with staff and see if something could be done, I would just like to see that building fixed up. Yeah, I think it plays an important role. It's in an industrial area. It's right next to a blue pole barn. There is other paint in the area. I just would like to see it fixed. And if there's a way we can do that, I would like to follow up with that. I don't know what that way is. I will leave that to people who have more experience with the downtown area and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to thank Mr. Sheeter for coming up and admitting that he kind of goofed on his understanding, for lack of a better word, an expensive oopsie. I'm gonna, I guess, take the optimistic hope that it was a misunderstanding and that it's better to fix it because it's already in the state that it's in. So I do like the suggestion that Alderman Grip made about having staff kind of see if we can come up with a creative third path. You know, I hope that the Design Review Board does not feel that we are disrespecting them or their time in any way. You know, they made a decision based on the information that was present at the time. But I think that is why we have this extra layer, because someone can say, oh, shoot, my architect didn't come up, and my kid had a thing going on, so something fell through the cracks. So that is also my hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to express some of my concerns with sending it back in one way or another is to reinforce again that the DRB really does have a hard job. These are people who are volunteering, and we're putting them in a position to stick their neck out and put themselves at odds with people that are either experts in the industry or in the business community, making a financial investment in both our real estate and our city and our workforce. And it's the tendency of these individuals, like any of us, to reach for some sort of Midwestern fair-minded compromise. But we do also put ourselves at risk when we do that because at times, it seems like the standard operating procedure for going before the DRB, if you have something contentious, is just to proceed without approval and then ask for forgiveness or put your hands up in befuddlement once you've been caught running the red light. And then we end up trying to walk it back, looking for these compromises. And the thing about the downtown is, again, it has momentum. The revitalization is more inevitable than ever before. And really, what, to some extent, the city's checks and balances are put in place now is to help make sure that everything is the top-quality version of what it can be. And so, not to put myself in conflict with what my other colleagues have said, but if a ugly, decrepit brick building today, if you blink tomorrow, it'll be a vibrant center of our community. And what is a pole barn on a parcel today, you could blink tomorrow, and it could be thriving multifamily, new construction. So you have to view it through that lens somewhat. And I say all this with empathy because I'm in the business community, and with my personality type, we do have a process, excruciatingly so. And it's hard to work, no matter how great the city staff is sometimes with these requirements, because sometimes it feels like they're not moving at the speed of business. I've been in those shoes when you're trying to make those moves. But I hope you can also understand that when you're on this side of the table, that it's all done with good intent. Because when you're on this side, we're the caretakers of the bigger picture and the generational progress that we're all trying to make here together. So those are my concerns with, at length, those are my concerns about sending it back for some sort of a compromise. I think at some point, we need to stick up for the principles that the DRB and these guidelines were put in place for, and really believe in the best possible outcome of the redevelopment downtown.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Jokic.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think, for me, that one of the two options would be either send it back to DRB or ask staff tonight. I hope we don't really vote on it. I think we got time to kind of figure this out. To me, I don't see sending it back to DRB as really an insult to them so much as, you know, I think we take the stance that, okay, we've got a petitioner that said, all right, hey, you know, there were some circumstances. A ruling was made without maybe all the facts or the information given. I'd like that opportunity. I think we just say, we're hearing that, and, you know, hey, whatever you bring it back to us with, then we're good, right? I think asking staff to come up with a compromise would be more insulting to the DRB than sending it back, in my opinion. Tonight, we did just appoint two new DRB members. So, you know, maybe their discussion would be a little different going forward with new information, new members. I don't know. My lean would be sending it back to them this evening. I don't know if Alderman Grip's going to make that motion. I've had the occasion in the past to make some of those motions. I don't know if I'm going to do that tonight. I'm willing to stick my neck out there again, if not, but that's all I have left.
Your Honor, this is Alderman McGinnis. I'd like to speak again at some point, if I could.
I hear you, Alderwoman McGinnis. There's a couple people, but I certainly will come back to you. Anybody else for the first time? Otherwise, I'll go to people who want to speak again. Okay? Alderman Ortiz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Laura, would you come up for just one second? I'm sorry. Not to put you on the spot, but I'm trying to remember back to last week. The majority of the building, when we did it last week, was 75% of it was old brick, 25, or roughly numbers, was 25% of it was new brick. Now, the information that we get in this email today is about 75% of it is the new brick, with which it could withstand the paint, and only 25% of it is the older brick, without exact numbers. In your opinion, with that, because I don't want to send something back if the information's the same or very close to the same, but with that drastic, because that's like flipping it 180, is that big enough difference that you think, in your professional opinion, that that's warranted for a second look?
I don't know if that ratio is accurate.
Okay.
So if you're looking strictly off of River Drive, that may be the case. Design Review Board has purview over things that are visible from the public right of way. And that's at a pedestrian level, because that's what the downtown is, is pedestrian-oriented. So while the east elevation of the building, and that's what has been partially painted, is historic brick, I still would put that in the percentage of the overall facade. And so it might not be 75 old, 25 new, it might be 50/50. But I don't know if that necessarily is something enough that it would sway Design Review Board's opinion. Please keep in mind also that even though it's newer brick, it's still porous, and that you still run into the same issues, and you have long-term maintenance problems associated with it. In addition, we're talking about the general cohesion of that block specifically, which the pole barn that was referred to is across the street on a separate block face. So we're looking at the cohesion of the, between Gaines and the other side of the street over that way.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanted to say, by framing this, I was hoping that I would hear a consensus and be able to make a motion on what I felt was a consensus. I have not heard a consensus. I don't plan to make the motion. If somebody else feels strongly about it, go ahead and do it. If not, then we would vote.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I wanted to ask, I don't know which of our attorneys is present tonight.
Mr. Warner's here.
Yeah. What is the, I don't really understand the legal means that the council, and I may have to have an exchange with you, Attorney Warner, of how we quote, "send something back to a commission." I don't know. Do we, I don't, we don't have that power to require them to look at something again, I don't believe. It's usually, it goes off our agenda, and then the person starts the process over, I believe. Is that not the legal process, or am I incorrect about that?
I hate to do this, but I would defer on this particular process to Laura Berkeley. But in general, in general, we can, the council can send something back.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, again, I believe sending it back sends a bad message. You know, I, you know, and I, you know, I feel like it's, you know, it's the wrong message to Design Review, so I would not be in favor of that. So thank you for that, Attorney Warner. I wasn't clear on that. But I questioned that, and, you know, again, we're looking at this building as a whole. It's, there is a great deal of it that is still old brick. And by the way, there are very good and gentle and appropriate means for removing paint from old brick now, that don't, that won't damage the brick more than paint on it long-term will do. And I have confidence that without paint, Mr. Sheeter can make this building look very nice, if he wishes to follow the, you know, the protocols that should be followed. And it'll be a wonderful-looking building, and it will look like a, you know, a building that belongs here, not one that's painted. There's, the pole barn is in another block. Every building, there's a yellow brick building, there's other red brick buildings all around this. And to have something painted would just, it would look ridiculous, given what the guidelines are for the downtown partnership, so, I'm sorry, for the downtown guidelines. So thank you very much for letting me speak again.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee.
Just a quick question. Under the circumstances, now, if we were to take a vote, the, if I understand right, it all revolves around paint or no paint, right? I think. Are there, is there anything else? I haven't read the Design Review Board decision, I'm sorry. But is there anything else in there that allows him to do other things to make this currently decrepit building look a whole lot better? What can we do within the scope of the Design Review Board decision that, let's say, doesn't involve paint? Can somebody help me with this?
So it's up to you if you want to take this on, Ms. Berkeley. Okay?
I will answer generally.
Yeah?
So, the way that the Design Review Board works is they review what the request is and go off of that. That is not saying that there couldn't be other alternatives to dressing up the building. But as it stands, for this request, the request was to paint the building, and so that's what's up for discussion at this current moment.
So, going back to what Alderman Grip said, if he insisted, and Mr. Sheeter insisted on paint, and it got turned down, he couldn't come back again, correct, to ask for paint, right?
Ms. Berkeley, I'll ask Mr. Warner to, please. Ms. Burke, I'll ask Mr. Warner to answer, please.
So this is getting at the question of similar or not.
Yeah.
So if this gets voted down, he could come back with another proposal that's not similar to this one, which could be a different treatment.
Like next week, he could come back, not in a year, right? Do I understand that right?
So it would have to be substantially different from what was requested previously.
Right. And are there options for those kinds of things? You know, again, I don't know. I'm not a brick-building human. You know, you see what I'm asking? I'm just trying to figure out what, I understand that the request was a very narrow request that went before Design Review Board now. I understand that now. So if we upheld the review board decision, Mr. Streeter could come back next week with another application before the Design Review Board that did something other than paint?
If it was determined to be substantially different, yes.
And who determines substantially different?
I do.
Okay, okay. And you're a reasonable human, yeah? Yeah, but I understand that, you know, there's also boundaries that you work within. I'm just trying to find a way to make this work, because it's just such an ugly building as it is on the outside, and I'd really like to see it fixed up. Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else? Very good. Brian, please call the roll.
Gripp.
Listen, ladies and gentlemen, I asked for anybody else, and I asked for two. If you were gonna make a motion, you should have done that. So you're asking me to allow you a third comment? No. Call the question. Brian, call the roll.
Gripp.
Hold on. Did you call the question? Okay, so it's my determin, okay. I'm going to allow you for a third time. Please, folks, pay attention. Thank you.
Sorry, Your Honor, I thought you were saying to comment third time. I'm gonna make a motion that this goes back to the review board, and only reason is, is as Alderman Condon said, or, not Condon, Jobin said, there are two new people, and we are not reversing their decision. I just feel the facts are different than the original, what was figured out.
So Mr. Ortiz, are you making a motion? We're not gonna have more discussion.
Yes.
Okay, so there's, refresh your motion.
I'd like to send it back to the review board.
Okay, and there's a second. Mr. Krupp, please call. Is there any discussion for the motion that he just made? And I see Alderman Gripp.
Yeah, so the one thing I want to say about sending this back to DRB is, the only reason I'm supportive of it, well, I'll say there's two reasons I'm supportive of it. I think we need to work with small businesses and come up with solutions, but also since he didn't have the opportunity to present at the DRB meeting. But I will say this, I don't disagree with their, what they came up with. I don't disagree with it, and I don't think they're going to change it either, but I am willing to give them that opportunity. So I just wanted to say that before we voted on it.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? I'll just add two cents worth. I ask that we can, and I think this council does a pretty good job of respecting the respective boards and commissions, they have an important job, and they're volunteers, and we ask for folks, we beg for folks, quite frankly, to do that. I understand the particular issue with him not being able to attend, but you know when these meetings are, and if it's so important to you, then someone comes, or a representative comes, or someone comes to state your opinion. Having said that, there's a motion and a second, there is no more discussion, so Brian, please call the roll on the motion to send it back to DRB.
Gripp.
A yes vote would be to send it back.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
McGinnis.
No.
Dickman.
Yes.
Cornet.
No.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Condon.
No.
Jobin.
Yes.
Dunn.
No.
Ann Kelly.
No.
Five yeses and five nos, Your Honor.
And I vote no. So the motion is not upheld, so now we're back on the original motion, which is to repeat again, the yes vote overturns the Design Review Board's decision, and no vote upheld, upholds the Design Review Board. Brian, please call the roll.
Gripp.
No.
Lee.
No.
Cornet.
Yes.
Dunn.
No.
Condon.
No.
Dickman.
No.
Kelly.
No.
Ortiz.
No.
McGinnis.
No.
Ann Jobin.
No.
Nine nos and one yes, Your Honor.
Very good, so the DRB's decision is upheld, all right? So now we go to, is there a motion for approval, all items on the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion and second. Brian, please call for all items on the consent.
Jobin.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Cornet.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Gripp.
Yes.
Ann Kelly.
Yes.
And yeses, Your Honor.
Very good, consent's approved. The next item is the other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. There are none for this evening. Next item, is there any public with business, anyone who would like to talk other than what's been discussed already on the agenda? Seeing none, is there any other reports from Miss Spiegel and the staff? There is not. Please be safe during the holidays. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Very good, be safe during the holidays.